Order for the Brookings County Commission February 23 meeting. Please rise for the pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which is stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we'd like to open invitation for any citizen to schedule time on the future commission agenda meeting. Seeing none, we'll move along, approve agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda? Additions? All right, if the agenda is hearing none, we'll approve the agenda. Consent agenda items. Look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Anything anybody would like to pull off and discuss? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Routine business, approval of claims.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion. Any questions on the claims? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. All right, before we get into department head reports, we have an 8:35 or 8:30 for our presentation from our state's attorney for the 2015 Brookings County statistics. So come on up Clyde, Susan, Terry. And we'll turn it over to you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I assume you've all received copies of our 2015 statistics. And as you probably have noticed from those, it was a little heavier workload than in I can say that the seven of us, which have been six for about the last two months, Abby being on maternity leave, it will sure be good when she's back in the middle of March. But the one thing that did increase significantly was the number of felony convictions, sentencings. I think that was up 20% from 123 to 148 felony sentencings that we had had last year. And felonies are those that take the most time, time and work. The types of felonies, I had thought that drugs were increasing significantly, but when we got to adding things up, they really did not. There were 58 felony drug convictions in 14 and 63 in 15, so that wasn't much of an increase. The misdemeanor drug offenses increased some. We have a number of ingesting and misdemeanor possession of marijuana, ingesting marijuana, class one misdemeanors, those did increase somewhat. One thing which you probably noticed was the significant increase in the DWIs in 2014. I think it was 184. And that jumped up to 270 in last year, 2015. The reason for that, which was the Supreme Court of the United States in their McNeely decision, and that came down at a time when in 2014, a number of the cases could not be prosecuted because of that Supreme Court decision. But the 270 last year, that's up similarly to 2011 when there was 275. That's way too many. I don't know what we can do about it. They are being arrested, they are being prosecuted, and in most instances, they are convicted. The one thing that was somewhat surprising is that the average blood alcohol in 14 and 15 was exactly the same, .169, which is twice as much as the legal limit. The domestic situations, either disorderly conduct or simple assault domestic, that's stayed pretty much the same for the last five years. The underage consumption was down in 2015 from what it was in 14. I really don't think that's because the under 21 age group is drinking less. I think they're just not being caught as much. And I think the reason for that is that the officers are busy with other matters. The percentage of court appointed attorneys fees recovered was slightly down in 2015. We recovered 39 and a half percent of the court appointed attorneys fees that were paid out. One of the reasons for that, I think, is that in 2015, 78 individuals were sentenced to the penitentiary. I think that was 74. But of those, only 58 were new. The others were those that had previously received probation, their probation was revoked. But that total was considerably more than 2014. And if a person's in the penitentiary, they're not repaying their court appointed attorney's fees. We were just slightly lower than the Third Circuit average, which was 40 point something percent. But I think we do a good job of recovering the court appointed attorney's fees. We pay out in court appointed attorneys, the fourth most in the state, just behind Brown County and certainly behind Minnehaha and Pennington. But we do a better job of collecting court appointed attorney's fees than those counties do. It's too much that we pay out in court appointed attorney's fees. I don't know what we can do about it. It seems like most people that are in court have court appointed attorneys, particularly on felonies. The one thing that we did have in 2015, we had three jury trials with, for all of those convictions and all those penitentiary sentences, only three trials, I think speaks well for the arrests that the officers do the way they are prosecuted because jury trials can be expensive, are expensive. It's a continuing matter. I counted up the number of felonies that were pending as of the first of the year of 2016, and there are 110 or were 110 felonies pending in first of January of 16. Thirty of those have already been sentenced in the first two months of this year. But I think Terry has told me that the number of juvenile adjudications and filings increased quite significantly in 2016 or 2015 over 14. I don't know what we can do regarding our juveniles, but the system of the way they are handling is changed from the recent legislation. I would certainly answer any questions that you have.
Clyde, on the increase in the number of people being sent to the penitentiary, how does that fall in with the Criminal Justice Reform Act where we were supposed to be going down in the number instead of up in the number? What do you think is happening? Just more felonies in Brookings County or?
I can't say. That's just what the judges do. There are many, of course, that are presumed probation, and they do get probation the first time that they're convicted. I think the one thing that's alarming or shouldn't be happening is that 17 people that were granted probation, that probation was revoked and they were sent to the penitentiary. So I think in general, our judges are complying with the law regarding the presumed probation and giving them probation. But when they're back in more than once, an end for probation violation, even for probation violation, they usually are not sent to first probation violation, but they do end up continuing to violate. So I can't say other than that the number of felonies being committed in Brookings County is increasing. And I don't know what we do about that other than to continue prosecuting them, and if it's necessary, they go to the penitentiary.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any questions regarding the juveniles for Terry? She compiled those statistics, and maybe she can briefly explain those for 2015.
I would say we actually had six last petitions filed last year. We are really utilizing diversion, but we had 27 more juvenile felonies. And these were multiple felonies, and we had 12 cases up from zero the year before in burglary in the third degree. So we had juveniles, oftentimes the same juvenile, coming back, robbing businesses, houses. It was just unforeseen from 2014. We also had a lot more sexual crimes with the juveniles. So the increase in the children going to the Department of Corrections is very much in line with the number of felonies. We had 12 juveniles sent to DOC last year. That was with 27 different felony files. So they were not going to DOC for petty theft or, you know, consumption. These were class five and class six felonies, and most of them had significant history. So the programs that we had were not working. With the new bill that has just come into effect January 1st, I foresee these numbers going down. However, since the beginning of the year, I have had four children in JDC due to felony incidents that were crimes of physical force against others. So, and three, two of them are actually being prosecuted as adults here in Brookings County. So it's a little bit of a change for our office, but we're doing a lot more with that.
And the four legal assistants and the three attorneys keep busy, I can tell you that.
I just want to say Clyde, Tom Wyeth here. It's been a pleasure. This is my last year, and I was just remembering 45 years ago, you were in private law, and I walked into your office to get a business deal. Once you became state's attorney, who would have thought I could have made the whole time without being in your office for another reason? But thank you for your service.
Yeah, this is my 42nd year. That's a long time.
Thank you. Thank you, Clyde. Thanks, Terry. All right, we'll move on to department head reports. Mr. Hill, do you want to get us started?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The next planning commission meeting is March 1st, which is next Tuesday. We had a PPCC meeting on February 11th. Our local emergency planning committee was quite well attended this year, the first one, and that was February 18th. We did approve our local emergency planning committee roster, and that's being sent into Pierre now, so we're in full compliance with the grant requirements for that program. We attended the Brookings Regional Home Show over the weekend. I sat there on Saturday, and Richard came in for the Sunday shift. And it was well attended, over 1,500 on Saturday. I guess I didn't get the numbers on Sunday, but we had a tri-state meeting came up, which I had to submit a late travel request for down in Sioux Falls. And on the 17th, I did attend a social media class in Sioux Falls, and the reason I requested a new vehicle last year is I sat down there for four hours waiting for my emergency management vehicle to be repaired. And it broke down, and then the mechanic came down from Brookings. Good thing he had a big hammer. I didn't realize that the civilians use the same philosophy that the military does. There's nothing a big hammer can't fix. And we got the truck home, and they took it over and put a new starter in it. But the highway department mechanic did a good job for me, and I wanted to thank him publicly for that. It was extremely cold to be crawling. First thing he asked, of course, when he showed up in Sioux Falls is, well, have you gone under there and hit the starter? And I looked at my clothes, and it was all dry and everything. I said, no, I did not. And I probably would never go under there. With me, I'd hit a little too hard and crack everything, and then we'd have an oil hazardous material spill on the ground. And don't forget, we still got a crisis leadership class and that Essentials of Cybersecurity. The crisis leadership class, I'm going to open up to other emergency management people. The Essentials of Cybersecurity, we're going to keep rather close in-house and invite the Brookings IT group, anyone dealing with IT, because that also includes private industry. And the cybersecurity class, I'm basically letting Mr. Plowman get the people for that. He brought that class to my attention and one of the class of this type. So we're going to let him spearhead bringing the people in for that particular one. And the crisis leadership one, that's going to be in conjunction with the local emergency planning committee meeting. So if anyone, and we'll have to start getting, we're going to have to start pushing the sign up for, especially for the crisis leadership one here in March. I'll start pestering people to commit one way, either attend my course or not attend, so I can go get other people, because we do have to fill the seats on that particular one. And other than that, we are working, at the next county commission meeting, you should have a set of safety bylaws for the Brookings County Safety Committee to, for the board to review and go. We have, we've always had a safety committee, but with this building and its aging, I believe we're not, it's not new anymore, even though people think that this is still the new building. And with the county getting other buildings throughout the county, we felt that the safety committee needed to be, we organized to a certain extent and bylaws put in place so we can start making sure we got a safe workplace. And this safety committee will be strictly for the employees of Brookings County. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Chris, did you want to give a report now, or you want to wait till later? Okay, sounds good.
Not a lot to report, other than the obvious. We mailed our notices, or qualified pre-sort mailed our notices on the 15th, which I don't know how they did it on President's Day, but they did go out. I was hoping to get them out on that Friday before, but they were adamant on the 15th. So they did go out, and we were taking calls and people in the office as early as 10 o'clock on Tuesday morning. So the mail moved pretty quickly. With that, we've been pretty busy fielding calls and answering questions. There's been, I don't know, we have got probably about a dozen corrections already of things that people have brought to our attention, or houses that we didn't get into that we'll be bringing to the local boards to get fixed. Just a note for the commissioner, it's in the travel request, I believe, I'm going to be traveling to Pierre on the 29th, and that is for the executive board meeting for the South Dakota Association of Assessing Officers as president-elect. In our downtime, from the time we mailed, I shouldn't say downtime, but from the time we sent our file to qualified pre-sort, where we would normally be stuffing and filling our envelopes with the assessment notices, we're kind of dead in the water. So I did have my three appraisers, four of us signed up, but my three appraisers in the office have completed their 2016 U.S.P.A.P courses, which is the Ethics and Procedures for Appraising. That's required every two years. So we did do that. And just for the rest of the board, myself and Mr. Wyeth and Mrs. Miller, we attended the BMU meeting that I invited the commissioners to come to with AE2S on the survey grade GIS layering that the municipal utilities is going to be going forward with. They need that so they can identify exact lot lines, easement areas, things like that for utility placement. With that, again, they've offered for us to partner with them in some form to get a copy of that layer when it's done, which for mapping purposes, no one would ever deny accuracy. Whether, and it's up in the air, and Mr. Witt over there actually came out when I asked him the question and posed the question, what are you looking for from Brookings County? And he flat out said, Brookings County doesn't have a lot of stake in this. Whatever you would offer, we would take. So we're not on the hook for anything. We're going to continue to work with them and talk with them. I'm in the loop, but it's not really my layer, it's going to be more Jim's direction. But we'll keep the commission informed as that moves forward and what we would like to do with that. So that's pretty much all I have for this part.
Chris? All right, thank you.
Good morning. Well, on the 10th, I did go up to campus and was meeting with some of the new students that are veterans up there to make sure that their benefits are being met, and sat down with them and kind of reviewed a few things with those. On the 23rd, I will be going up, well, this afternoon, I'll be going up there again. I also sat in a meeting up on campus to, it's a little, it's actually quite a bit over my head, but they look at the military experience that the veterans have had and what training they've received, and especially now that a lot of the military is going with computer systems and, of course, navigation systems and stuff, and seeing how much of the information that they've learned through the military and have actually used through the military can translate into credits. Currently, they do get six credits for physical lifetime living, you know, general living, it's, you know, bowling and stuff like that falls under those general credits. But now what they're looking at is if you have some Microsoft licenses, can those be brought over, and what kind of credit can be allowed for them, like for computer science classes and stuff? So it was very interesting. And again, not knowing the whole system accreditation and credit granting and stuff, it was kind of interesting. I think they invited me more there just to be a cheerleader, which I did. And then on the 12th, I did go to Sioux Falls for welfare training, and it was a very good training. It did show us a lot of what different counties do, and it also spurred me to look a little bit more at some of our policies and procedures, and that'll probably be something that Irene and I will be starting to work on here in the near future, a little more on that. Otherwise, traffic. We had 115 phone calls since the last time we met. Eighty-six, we made eighty-six calls out. Number's down a little bit, a little more email action there. As far as veterans stopping in, we had 33, and as far as welfare people stopping in, we had 27.
All right. Questions for Mike? All right, thank you. Misty, do you have an agenda item later? Okay, all right.
Good morning.
Morning.
You should have received in your packet the finance officer's report, and we have four, be it noted, items. The auditor's account with the treasurer, the payroll, and additives total, the highway expenditure report, and the register of deed statement of fees collected. And also in your report, the surplus cash, we are down a little bit, and I think it's pretty much a January thing. We paid out a lot of the, like the hospital, a lot of the big name items for the yearly contributions, so that is why that's down to the 14%, but that's pretty normal. So just to give you a heads up there. And also, I put in your packet the difference that we received for the bank franchise tax. For a total this year, we were up about $45,000, and you can see back to 2012, it does fluctuate quite a bit, but at least it's up this year, so that's good. It's, we're over budget now with the county portion, and I'm sure the schools are happy to receive more money on that. And we were, according to strategic plan, supposed to come to you in February and let you know for sure how many liquor licenses are available. And we did check with the state, and it is the same, the seven liquor licenses. So we are on track with those, so there won't be any new ones. And also in our office, Jenna's working on the surplus sale, and hopefully we'll have that now in March. Everything is pretty much up on site. We do have to do advertising, so it will be in March. We don't have a specific date yet, but we will be advertising for that shortly. So that will be held, and we will let you know how that goes. Anybody have any questions?
No, I think we're good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Morning.
Morning.
I gave you the stats for the jail. If you guys have any questions concerning those stats, just yell out. Just a couple of things. I don't know where this, the bill with the guns in the courthouse. Evidently, the County Commission Association now is staying neutral, that they're not voicing their concern, supposedly, but we can't run down what county it was, is that there was a county out west somewhere that thought that, they felt more comfortable if there were some guns in the area. But us sheriffs and the judges, and we think it's ridiculous, but we haven't, they haven't run down the county that, but anyway, somewhere along the line, the county commission, the state is staying neutral on it. But I've emailed our representatives, and they're voting no on that. And I think some of you, I think we wrote a letter, you wrote a letter. So hopefully, we always hope common sense prevails, so we'll see what happens. Just a couple, just going to tell a couple stories, because just to let you know what my staff has to go through, is that on February 12th, we had an emergency committal. And, you know, sometimes I wonder, I go, you know, did we get, you know, should this, did we get dumped on a little bit, or should this have been an ambulance ride? Is this individual needed oxygen, so they sent oxygen along, and things were going good till they got to Irene, and then he ran out of oxygen, and then he said he couldn't breathe, so they had to call an ambulance at Irene, transport the emergency committal to Yankton Hospital, which then he was checked out and got back to normal, and then he went to Yankton. So it was quite a trip for my staff that night. At the same time, I've taken over emergency salvation army after hours and on holidays and stuff, and I got a call, I just got home and I got a call and said that the police department says, this is kind of vague, but some lady's bringing in her brother from a story that needs a room for the night. Astoria that needs a room for the night. So I go back into the sheriff's office, and this gal comes in with her brother and says, "He's yours, I don't want nothing to do with him." Dropped him off like a kitty, said that he's been seven, he's been on meth, off meth for 14 days, he's overdosed on his pills, he's your problem, and walks out the door. So now I go, okay, now what am I going to do with this guy? So, but anyway, we called these center to do a chemical dependency quick evaluation, they thought he was probably okay, you know, but they have no means to do anything with him, so I'm, they thought, the sister claimed that he might have overdosed on his medicine to help him with coming off the meth. So, we took him up to the hospital, and, you know, to make sure his tox level and stuff, and the doctor felt he was fine, but now, still, what do I do with him? You know? Evidently, he came from Iowa, the sister went to Iowa, he'd been in homeless shelters in Iowa, the sister goes and gets and brings him, brings him here, thought that she was going to get him into Keystone, but Keystone ain't going to take him unless it's a court-ordered or you got insurance, right? So no insurance. So now they don't want to deal with this. I called the mother in Astoria, where this originally, where this originally went, and the mother goes, "He's your problem." You know, so I looked at Bart, and I said, because I'd called Bart in, and I says, "Bart, what do you think, you think Serenity Hills?" And he says, "I'll try." So he called Serenity Hills, and they took him. So Bart and myself transported him to Serenity Hills. So, I think our tour and stuff at Serenity Hills got us a kind of an in there, you know? So they took him. So, just to let you know, I just, you know, what do you, you know, what do you do when this person comes in and he says, "Now, you're your problem," and I like to push it on somebody else, which we ended up doing at Serenity Hills, but I called this mom in Astoria, and I says, "You do realize I'm a jail, not a medical facility?" And she goes, "He's your problem." So, so that was our Friday night, just to kind of fill you in on some of the things that goes on, so. We have our first jail committee meeting today at 1:00, so we'll see how it goes there, and other than that, that's, if you can just get some questions. In two weeks, I'll present my end-of-the-year report. And interesting with the state's attorney, that I have 10 more inmates per day this, or in 2015, and they did in 14, and I was contributing to drug arrests, but it'll be interesting once we plug all the numbers in, what our increase, we're already at an increase per day already for this year, over last year, so if that continues, so it'll be interesting to see where, I think the drug arrests in 2016 will be more than in 15, there's no doubt in my mind, because we've had already a lot of drug arrests already since the first, so I think, but it'll be interesting what my, where my increase is, because I was going to blame it on drugs for last year, but it'll be interesting to see what that is, but we'll deliver that in a couple, at the next meeting.
Something, I guess, a question, when we were, when Governor Dugard was here, Commissioner Miller posed a question about increased, and his response was that if we are above a certain level, that they will, have you, have you talked, or put money towards that? They'll pay extra dollars if you're, if the jail, if we increase our jail?
Yeah, they did, we did get a, we did get a check, I think it was for $25,000.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
So that's kicking in?
Yeah, yeah, we did, that was above and beyond, so, yeah.
And I would like to say, in response to that, you know, I got shut down pretty bad by him saying it was a myth, and that that money was available, so I told them immediately, "Let's figure out how to get that money," and Bart did jump on that and called with, "I have great news." I think it was 28,000.
I probably didn't even tell him, Vicki and myself worked, you know, the check came and we got it in there, I didn't even tell him about the check, that we got the check for $25,000.
Yeah, he was really excited.
What's interesting, this is not supposed to hurt us, but why are all us jails, all us jails, all us sheriffs looking to expand? Falk County's building a 30-bed jail, that they got approved for a 30-bed jail, Collington County wants to build, because he's short, Madison wants to build, so we're all looking for expansions and more beds, so.
That's right.
It's interesting, but we did get a check for, I think it was 25 grand.
Good. All right, anything for Sheriff? Thank you. All right, Dick, you're up next, please. I think so, we'll just, yeah, let's go over all that stuff here now, and then we'll move on to regular business.
Okay. Well, first of all, to give you the status of the bridge south of White, the grant application is submitted, the, all the prerequisites to have them look at that has been met, and by the 15th of April, hopefully, there will be word of who is definitely rejected or not accepted for a grant. So, anyone not hearing that should kind of take into consideration that it will be approved. Also, I called Doug Kittenberg to get further information from some questions the commission had on the status and possible options we might have, and so, just to summarize his conversation, without a doubt, his best recommendation would be for Brookings County to not make a decision on the bridge south of White until after the big grants have been handed out or awarded. And another response that he had to my question, to elaborate a little bit, was how could you consider not taking advantage of an 80% funding proposition? In other words, the big grant? And as for submitting our plans, Banner has them done, and they are going to send them to the state. However, Doug says that it's not a normal process, that the state DOT would look and start reviewing plans unless there was a reason. And as far, I asked him then, I says, "Well, I know, but we're just wondering on this grant if it could speed up the process by having them to look ahead at our plans." And he said that this would create a headache, they don't normally do that, he says, "You're not the only county that has this request," and in other words, he was saying what Brookings County is asking is not the exception, but more common, and they want to stick to their guns and keep things up. I think one thing that he reassured me of was that, being the first year, and it's kind of a learning process, he is very leery of taking exceptions and trying to accommodate people. Obviously, they're aware that everyone has a little bit different scenario, and just, that was his answer. And then, he said that for them to consider this request, it would be because they are aware of how far the project is along. He realizes that we've got everything in, all we need is approval. However, it's not something that, again, they want to create a exception to the rules, so to speak. He also said it wouldn't even be considered if it wasn't the good rapport that the DOT has with Banner Engineering. They feel very comfortable that whatever plans Banner would submit, they would be acceptable. That sounds crazy, but believe it or not, when we submit these plans, it is, it is like getting our audit report back. It's not common that it wouldn't come back with comments or changes of some sort that the DOT finds better. And so, in a normal process, that could be four weeks, they'll send it in and look at it, and they kind of dissect it, and when they send it back to Banner, it'll have things that they want changed before they will approve it. So, that's just the way the thing goes, it isn't as quick as we would like. So anyway, he just said that what you want to do is relay to Banner, which I did, to complete the plans as soon as possible, send them in, and if they would, one thing they could do that is against the rules, again, is if we won the award for the grant, they might consider allowing us to let the project locally, not through the DOT. Again, since this is an on-system bridge, the DOT would take care of all the administration and the bid letting and whatever, which creates red tape, obviously. But that, again, would be something we would make requests for if we allow it. The other thing he mentioned to me, is he says, "We at the DOT have tried to consolidate most of their bridge-letting projects in the fall. They find it far more competitive, it creates the most competitive environment, and it's also a time that contractors are definitely figuring out what their workload would be." And lastly, one of the things he reminded me of, and again, he can't speak, I told him I was going to present this to you, so he isn't going to say something that he didn't want out to the public or whatever, but of the 99 bridge grant applications for 2016, over 70%, and this was in the newspaper, but it's, over 70% of the counties were requesting preliminary engineering grants, and ours is one of the few that was submitted that are shovel or shelf-ready, which really is putting it in a very good position. So, to make a long story short, his kind of scenario would be to see what happens as far as the award process, if it, if it does come out, we'll move forward as quickly as possible, and if you so choose, if you'd want to let it locally, now, one thing you got to remember, by being let locally, we're going to pay an engineering firm to do all the design paperwork, put the specs together, everything that the DOT would normally do as included in that, we're going to assume that cost. And I think they would allow us to use that as a match, but I can't guarantee that, he wouldn't speak of, you know, a yay or a nay. So anyway, what does this tell us? A normal timeline in this bridge process would be, in year one, turn in a grant for preliminary engineering, year two, we'd turn in the design and the replacement grant, year three would be bid letting and construction. And if the grant is awarded, let's say, for this project we're talking about, the bridge south of White, if on April 15th, the grant is awarded, on April 16th, possibly, since we've talked to the DOT, that they would instantly trigger the review process, by May 13th, we should hear of the results of that review process. Then, in the meantime, once they decide, you know, through the review process, that these plans will be acceptable, by August of 2016, the DOT will then allow the environmental impact to begin, and that normally is three to four months under normal time. That is strictly their doings, but that would be another thing, we'd have to prod the DOT to expedite along, how much we could save, I don't know. Then, when the environmental study passes, and the project can move to the bidding process, which, again, they, they have their Ts to cross and their Is to dot, and it usually takes about four weeks to complete that, then, somewhere between September 9th and October 1st, could be the bid letting for 2017 construction plan. Now, if you want to go with the project without a grant, and by the middle of March, plans could be reviewed by the DOT, and then, they would have to go through the environmental data reports and permits from the Corps of Engineers, again, the DOT would take care of all that, but now we are taking care of it. And then, if you get success with the Corps permits, you could advertise for bids in mid-April, and with a bid opening, hopefully, like June 1st of 2016, with a completion date of November 1st, 2016. The difference in the two would be a difference of about $437,000 that Brookings County would take on. And so, it is possible to get it done, the money was budgeted, but I guess it would be up to the board on how they'd want to proceed. My recommendation as a highway superintendent would be to not do anything except forward everything onto the DOT, and find out in April whether we're awarded the grant or not. That would be my recommendation. After that, the difference in time, a person would just have to look at as far as what we could do to speed it up locally, that, I hope, we could, wouldn't be a lot, but it would be some, and the only reason you're getting it sped up is because of doing, taking on a lot of the tasks locally. The second part of my report, just kind of giving you an idea of how this stuff moves, because I, I'm certainly struggling to sort through all this new grant process, but in the old process, the bridge north of Brewes that we wanted to get done this summer will probably not make the bid letting deadline, and it might go in September. To give you an idea, we started that process with the resolution submitted to the DOT for the STIP program in 2008. Along with that, they had total control on how they prioritized what projects would get done. Right now, even after they left it in the program, which was very favorable to Brookings County, we're finishing up, they're starting to send out the paperwork that needs to be done, just to get the thing to go to bids. In our agenda, you see, we're going to be signing a right-of-way certificate that shows we have no encroachments. We're going to be signing a utility certification that shows that the utilities have been notified that this project is coming up, that they can kind of make preparations for that. I've been working on the easements, they're only temporary, and one is a little strip of a permanent easement. It took me less than a half hour to do two of the three landowners, and the third landowner I still haven't got done, and I might have to make a trip up by St. Cloud, Minnesota to get him to sign it, so we can expedite this along as soon as possible. After those are submitted, and I've already told the state that it looks like it'll be the March 8 meeting that will get them signed, you not only have to sign them, but then you have to have a minutes published and everything, I shouldn't say published, that's the wrong term, you have to have the minutes, approved minutes submitted with those to make them acceptable. Well, the state understands that that takes time, so basically, we'll be sending them in. in with, you know, the unofficial minutes, and then we'll submit the official ones when they go on. Just the two weeks between the last meeting and this meeting changed the deadline for bidding from May 4th at the latest to October of this fall. So it can be real frustrating when you see how these things are done, and the state pretty well holds the cards. After you get the right-of-way certificate and everything turned in, then they will send you like an okay-to-go-to-bid certificate, they'll send you a landowner easement paperwork that finalizes that they've received everything, and it's, it's a checkoff. Another thing in the next, we've got this coming up that I gotta have done by the May 8th, there'll be a choosing contractor for our bridge inspections and weight restrictions, and, you know, it's those types of things that we kind of gotta play by their rules. It just, I, I know Commissioner Krogman mentioned last time, some of these agreements, you gotta kind of try to massage, and you gotta work them along. It, it would be nice to have the ability, and I try to be as diplomatic as I can, because, and, and we're not the only one in this boat, you know, they realize that everything wants to move along quicker than they'd like, but that's, that's what we do. So, that kind of gives you an idea on those, and before, if I could take some questions, the other thing that's coming up with my thing is the seasonal weight restrictions will be coming. I'm, I'm sure a lot of people have been getting calls, and we have, and we've been trying to notify people that we're, we're on top of it, and maybe by the end of next week, we might have to put the weight restrictions on, it's getting very close. It's also very inconvenient for a lot of people, so we'll try to be as accommodating as we can. Yesterday, we had the bid opening for supplies, things came in pretty darn favorable. Road oil for like our chip seals and stuff came in like $200 a ton less than it was a year ago. Obviously, crude oil prices have something to do with that, gravel was about normal. And the other items as far as crack filling material, whatever, stayed about the same. But it, it kind of gives you an idea, the reason I bring that up is, is it shows how volatile our operations are. It doesn't take, you know, a lot, you just can't imagine something fluctuating $200-some dollars a ton in one year. You can't imagine gas prices going up 50 cents or 30 cents in a week. But when those things happen, we're, we're really in a hard way, because that makes a big, big impact. So, that is my report, and I'll take any questions if you'd like. All right. Questions? Do you want to get started?
I, I have a question actually for Stacy. Our five-year plan that was submitted to the state, is that in Dropbox? Can I, can I access that from where I'm sitting here?
I thought we put it in there.
Okay, so it is here, and I'm just not looking right. Okay, I'll keep looking for that. So Dick, I'm, I'm a little unclear, and this is probably because I don't have that document in front of me. What bridge work are we going to get done in 2016?
The three structures under 20 feet, and those will be box culverts.
And which, do we know which three those will be?
Yeah, two, one on 8 and two on 46.
Okay.
And then, if this bridge up north of Bruce that should have been done this year, that won't get done till 2017. 2016 will be, if we move ahead and things go quicker than normal, we could possibly get the bridge south of White, but I would not anticipate that that would do that. I, I would really anticipate that that would go to bids in September with construction as soon as, as they could move after that. Now, there's always a possibility, if there was a good fall, and I'm, I'm pulling at straws here, but let's say they let the bid in September for the Bridge South of White, and they give it a June 1st, 2017 deadline. If by any chance, there was a contractor looking for that work, and they would have the opportunity to move in, and we had a good fall, they could easily get it done before ground froze up. But to expect that, I, I think it would be more an exception than the, than the rule. So right now, it'd be just the three sites under will be what will get done. Also, any of the grants that aren't awarded in April, automatically, everything has got to be resubmitted. If we want to stay with that plan of attack, everything will have to be resubmitted come this next October and November. Same way with our five-year plan will be updated. So to make a long story short, the only assured bridge construction for 2016 right now would be the three structures under 20 feet. And we haven't even bid them yet, but I mean, they'll be, they'll get done.
I guess, I got questioned, I was for Commissioner and Dick. I thought in September, we budgeted and planned on doing this Bridge South of White. When did this change? Did it change when we applied for the grant and decided not to do it? I guess, I don't understand.
Yeah, I guess my recollection was that we bid or budgeted for the full amount in case the grant was denied. But, I don't know, unless everybody else has a different, I could be wrong, but...
No, I mean, I think we wanted to all go, go forward as much as possible with it, but we wanted to see if we could get it into the grant. And that's now, I think where we're at, is we're looking at a timeline here that doesn't allow for the grant to wait till April, and then to start, which then we would miss the, the bid letting in the, you know, just like you said in the second part, we'd be, we'd be behind if we waited for the bid. Basically, that's the question, is if we wait for the bid, or the grant, excuse me, the grant letting, if we get it, we're, we're missing out on, you know, two months of, of time. And that puts us from bid letting from the first of the spring to bid letting in the fall, which then puts construction next year. So I mean, I think that's kind of the decision we gotta decide to make today. Our discussion that we need to talk about is, you know, their timeline is going to push it to 2017 if we wait.
That's what I mean, we didn't, we didn't see this timeline when we were doing everything else. Did the state just come out with this timeline now?
No, it didn't exist, because we didn't know when, like, for example, the meetings we had back in May, they still suggested that by October 1st, you'd have to have your five-year plan in. By December or whatever, you had to have your, or no, by November 15th, I'm sorry, then your grant applications were supposed to be in. Then, when you had the award, there was really no timeline ever discussed, other than, you know, if you did it, if we were taking on the whole responsibility from start to finish, which I guess I wasn't aware of, that we were considering until after we found out if a grant was awarded. That's about the only, I guess, timeline we could think of. These other timelines, I would say, came from a more realistic, when I'm asking questions of the DOT, the generic, what they could comfortably tell me was the timeline I put together here. And, other than that, you're pretty much, you can ask the DOT for a timeline in any project, and they're very leery to comfortably tell you a specific time or date, because they just may not be able to do that. As we got closer, I think the reason they got more specific for me on a timeline was because they couldn't understand how we could consider giving up the opportunity to have that project, 80% of that project paid for. And, you know, they're asking me, not, not everybody else, but they, they thought, you know, how in the world would you ever even consider this? But, I says, I'm just asking, and I just want some clarification.
So, the department does not intend on allowing a grant to do any bridge building in 2016?
Oh, sure, though, there were, the, the ones that were in that 25% that are shovel-ready, they have to be ready for construction within six months. So, if they could find a contractor, when, when, when we go to bid, like in September or whatever, they'll hopefully get them done. But there's only so many bridge contractors, and depending upon which ones get accepted. For example, the one south of White will be a very attractive contractor for the ones that are going to be doing our bridges under 20 feet. I mean, if they're still in the area, or they have an idea that they could possibly get that and coordinate it so that they're here, that could move very quickly, but we can't promise that. If you go statewide, the state right now, and that's another thing with the Bridge North of Bruce, they feel it, it would be very uncompetitive to bid it right now. He said, if, if you could get two bids, you'd be lucky, and if they weren't totally inflated because they're cramped to get it in, I'd be surprised. So, I'm trying to be very conservative here and not promise things that may not happen. But if they let it by the grant, they could easily have it ready for bids by September, and if, when they bid that, whoever wins that bid, they have the discretion of when they want to build that. They, they don't start like the day after we give them the notice to proceed. They could, but there's no guarantee. And that's another thing, you don't know what you're working with until you find out who your contractor's going to be. Another very good candidate is the one that did the bridge out by the gun range this fall, Pron Construction, very good crew, they were real easy to work with, did a very good job. They're in penalty right now. They took on more than they could, they got done what they could, but until that thing is done, it isn't done. So, people like that are going to be very leery to, to bid where it might cramp their style. They'll be very accommodating if they've got a little window of time to complete that. Does that help? And, and somebody, let's say a bigger contractor, let's say a bridge over the river down by Baltic, or Sioux Falls, or, or Yankton, if they get awarded a, a bigger contract, contractor, he's the only one that can do those. If he's already filled his schedule, he won't be very interested in that. If, if he's looking for work, he'll be, he'll be ready to go right away. That's...
So it is the department's intention to ha- have some of the grant money be used this year for building some bridges somewhere?
Oh, sure.
It's going to be up to the contractor to decide when they build.
Right, they can't really control that.
Because they could build right away, or what are you saying? Is they, they could build the next year, depending, and we, we don't have control over the contractor, is basically what you're saying, is we could try to bid it, we can say we like it done, but, you know, they won't accept a bid saying it's got to be done in two months, because they're just...
Exactly. There, there's another thing with bridge contractors, if the bridge is less than 65 feet, it, it's less involved, and it's, it's more, more people are capable of doing that. If it's above that, then you're very, very limited. And that's why, like the bridge up by Bruce, even though it might be ready in May, and if we don't make it by Friday, it'll be September, but they still feel that, that those contractors will be much more competitive in September than they will in, if we let it this spring.
Let me ask you this on a question here. We have this timeline of what they had talked about. Is there any way we can start the environmental study ahead, while the review process is going? Why, I mean, so for example, we wait till April 15th, and we get the grant, why couldn't we have started our, our environmental study in March? To, to take those three months that allows us to turn around and bidlet as soon as their, their review process is done? Instead of saying, okay, now order the environmental, we've got the environmental done, and we can bidlet this spring? And, and then, and we do the local bid letting, and so, we try to do all that for them. Is there any chance we could do a spring bid letting by, by doing all this at the same time? Why does it have to be chronological? Can it all be started at the same time?
Okay, the best I could explain it by not being an engineer is, until you finalize the plans, you can't tell for sure exactly the inter- environmental impact that it may or may not have. And so they take all that data that comes with the, the final design, so to speak, and they start to run the numbers, and then the environmental people are the ones that do that review. Well, again, they can't review something or the impact of something until they know what it's going to be. But I don't, I don't know better than that.
No, that's, that's a good answer.
And I'm just concerned, we can probably look at a 2000, late 2017, or even a 2018 completion date on this bridge.
You would have to put that in the contract. If, if you want it done by May 1st, if you want it done by December 31st, I, that would, again, get back to how competitive it's going to be. I don't know.
So if we decided to put in a contract for the bids, and they submitted the bids September 1st, and we said we wanted it done by the end of the year? Are you thinking that we wouldn't get bids, or people wouldn't be committed to doing that, or?
I, I would say it would be less likely that they would want to bid, because they've got 2016 schedule fairly well committed to.
Will pay more.
What's that?
Will pay more.
Well, or that, yeah. And, and once the ground, with the type of construction that'll go on up there, once the ground is froze, it's kind, you're just done working. Because unless they can get to a point, and then we would allow them to a grace period to come back and finish some of that stuff, you know, and those are all things you would visit with the contractor to decide if he would be willing or not. You know, if you want to hold these contractors to the rules and regulations or the specifications, then you're going to have to either close the window and, and take what they come up with, or you can give them a little more of a grace period and, and hope that works in our favor. We won't know that until we find out who, who a contractor is. The people that are doing our, our, you know, Holloway that's doing our, will be doing our under 20-foot boxes this year, he would absolutely love to have that project, and he'd love to be, he's pretty much would like that just for his workload, but I don't think he's interested in 2016. We made arrangements to have our 2016 work done in 2015, and the 15 was done in 14, and that's, I'm, I'm doing the, the arranging or hopefully reserving times for that. If, if we started jumping in and out and whatever, I don't, I'm just speculating here. But again, I, I think they take my word as being credible, that, that when I'm suggesting something or asking if this is possible, they realize that I'll follow through, hopefully with that. And that's why it's important that I stay in tune with the board, that, that, you know, come budget time, if, if, if the money isn't there, I'm not going to tell them, well, I'll find it somewhere, as you guys plan on doing this, you know. So, that's... So, that's, unfortunately, kind of a grim, and I know Larry mentioned about notifying some of these people so they can get their contractors, I can gladly, uh, do that. Um, but the other thing is, I, I guess I really need to know more. If, if we are going to not take advantage of the grant possibility, and you want Banner to start, uh, you know, then, then I need to know, I need to let them know.
Banner to start what?
And then I'd have to let the state know. What's that?
Banner to start what?
Well, sta- uh, Banner could take and start the environmental stuff and everything else, 'cause they won't need the review from the state as technically as what they would if the state was doing it. If the state does it, we gotta wait till they're done before they can-
Is Banner who, if we have the grant, is Banner who would do the environmental study?
That's a good question. I don't think so. They put together the paperwork and send it to the Corps, and the Corps does the review of that. Because even with our structures under twenty feet, we've already did that process, and we've got that going. We haven't heard back from the state.
So, in the grant program, a bridge that's in the grant program, the, um, DOT picks who does environmental study?
Yes.
And it's the Corps?
Yes.
Okay.
Questions, uh, trying to follow. The, um, difference of us doing it ourselves and then following the bid, extra cost to us is four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, you said earlier?
Yeah, right now, we'll pay, right now, our match is about a hundred and four thousand dollars. And some of that will be canceled out by the preliminary engineering we've paid for and stuff like that. However, if we pay for the whole thing, the engineer's estimate of that, when we turned it in, was five hundred and thirty-seven thousand.
And if we proceeded with that, and we just say we wanted to do it, could the bridge be built by the end of this year? You're saying no?
It would be, it would be about, it would be a little bit more possible than through the grant, but it would be a very slight difference.
See, I kinda have, back to Larry's point, we had those people coming in, and, and then, we didn't have all the information then, but we did budget it for the bridge, correct? So, the question is, if we think it's legitimate to spend four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars of the taxpayers' money to gain three hundred and sixty-five days to fulfill a promise we made to some people up by White, is that correct? That's really what it comes down to. Initially, when I got your information, uh, right away, I started, oh, we gotta figure some finagling here, some politicking, some, oh, use the word "normal." Well, sometimes, if you lean hard enough, you get outside of normal, or whatever it would take, but after your presentation, I've kinda, I can't find any loopholes, you know, or even shift money, do this, and have the, the extra money we're spending be applied to another project, you know? Shuffle money around, so when you get all done, we're back to even maybe a couple years later, you know, and getting our projects done, and, but I, I guess I don't see the, the loopholes to jump through, too. So, I, it's kinda down to that four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. And then, we're rolling the dice a little bit, if we're actually gonna gain the three hundred and sixty-five days of use.
A good example would be is if, if, let's say, you push the threshold, and they turned in a bid for six hundred and four thousand dollars. That could easily happen, too. I, I mean, we're just going by an engineer's estimate of a normal-
So, you're saying that, uh, the June first, and I'm looking at the timeline without the grant, so you're saying if we decide not to, we could go with environmental study right now, which would then, then we'd bidlet June, still not knowing it, what bids we will get, and then we would put on that bid that we want a completion date of November first?
Right.
And if, if somebody says, I'm booked, I, I can't bid this, they would say, we have to push that to next year before I could get it done? Is that kinda what you're saying? Where, where you're questioning-
You'd have to rebid it.
When you ask Tom, or Tom asked the question is, could it be built today? You still couldn't answer that, 'cause you still don't know what the bids will come up if we're, they're booked or not.
And, and the reason, like, with the environmental review, they could send that off and, and get the process starting, that's still no, that's a best guess estimate of when we'd get it back from the Corps. And you wouldn't go to bids until we, we did that. So, I would say with the timeline without the grant is, is a realistic timeline, and with that, there's too many variables to promise anything before the end of the year. It's, it's probably less than likely.
And it's because these bridge builders, um, usually book out a year advance.
Oh, yeah.
That's, I mean, that's what they're, they're gonna be looking at bids here, and that's why they do the fall stuff, so they're doing for the year in advance. So, they, these bridge builders could be booked already for two thousand sixteen from bids from last year, is kinda what you're saying.
Very possible.
Okay.
And, what has happened here is, we, we really were not in a position to promise those people regarding that bridge south of White, because we didn't have any of these timelines.
Well, yeah, that, and also, let's say, we did the budget process, started in May or June, uh, and, and so, it wasn't approved until September first. Well, I would find it very uncomfortable to be putting together this stuff preliminarily for a project, even though, like Larry says, it was put in the budget, that money wouldn't have been available till after the first of the year, which, if everything goes accordingly, I wouldn't get in a pickle myself. But, when they finalize, or, I'm sorry, the board finalized the budget in September, and by that time, we had information from the state that this grant program was going to become a reality, then, I think, again, fiscally responsibly, it was best to at least explore and see what possibilities we had for that. And, one of the things that made it more attractive than the other ninety-nine that were turned in, is we took it on ourselves to start paying for this stuff and getting the ball rolling. It, it can turn out to be a very positive decision that we made. Um, I know it isn't, uh, the best, probably, in all people's, uh, review of the way things have gone, but I think it shows that, you know, we weren't dragging our feet, or we weren't trying to create a, a hardship, we're just trying to get done what needed to be done.
Was, was this bridge the only one we submitted?
Yes. Well, we sent two preliminary, uh, eval- um, preliminary grants for preliminary engineering in also, and those will be, we won't know what will happen on those.
Right. But this was the only one that we asked for the thing?
Yes.
So, if we were to pull this one, we wouldn't be looking in the first, uh, yeah?
Right.
Okay.
And also, if we let the state know that we don't want it, we're gonna pull it, we, we need to let them know, too, because we don't want them to be, um, you know, in limbo. They're assuming right now we'll go through with it.
I, I guess, uh, I wanna be careful with the word "promise," but I, I definitely feel those people had the perception, which it becomes reality, that this bridge was gonna be done by the end of the year, we were by hook or by crook. Uh, that's my recollection. I don't know if that's everybody else's recollection.
That's my understanding, too, and I felt we should've moved forward when we budgeted the money, and we could've been bidding it in January. It, I don't know what to say now, I just-
Would you-
Would take advantage of the grant? I mean, there's no sense in not taking advantage of the grant now, 'cause you're not gonna gain nothing. It's still at the mercy of when the state approves it, and when the contractor decides to come in and work on the bridge. He might not even make the timeline, and like I said, it, realistically, realistically, two thousand seventeen, late two thousand seventeen, possibly even two thousand eighteen on completion on this bridge.
Yeah, I wouldn't think it'd go that long, but it's-
It could.
Mm-hmm.
If it's bid in two thousand seven-
Not, not if we specify.
If, if you specify, most bridge projects have a fall completion date. And if they don't make the fall and it freezes up, it could be two thousand eighteen.
Similar to what's going on to the Bruce Bridge.
Mm-hmm. Possible, but you gotta remember, you're talking a window of time already, twelve months in advance, which, if I was a contractor, I'd feel much more comfortable promising or signing something a year in advance than I would, you know? You could easily get a contractor, and the contractor could go broke or something and go out of business, and, and you're back, whatever, I mean, can't plan for that. Lightning could strike me right here.
It's happened before, I mean, you can't get in the backfield of the bridge, whatever, I mean, it's-
Putting timelines, and timelines sometimes relate to cost. You know, if you put to a pretty tight one, then they'll, yeah, we'll do it for more money? Is that the case? I mean, sometimes timeline relates to cost, you're more liberal, they're maybe more flexible, you get a lower price bid. Um, what, does the state ever say, well, what, that timeline's gonna raise the cost of this project by a couple hundred thousand? Were you kicking in eighty percent for that timeline? They ever done that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, we got messed up because of this, and this is a whole new situation for all of us, for, for our highway superintendents. I mean, I don't think anybody could've foreseen that this was gonna happen, and I think that if we are good stewards of taxpayer money, we need to see if we get this grant and do this.
I, I would say those people that were in here should be invited to a meeting with us to have this all explained to them, quite frankly. I, you know, I think they deserve a, they went through a couple visits, correct? If my memory served right, they took their time, came in and-
I, I think they need to be notified, 'cause, I mean, they're doing grain contracts probably now. They're gonna be moving grain next few years, they, they're that far out.
And I think, I think their business will still go on. I mean, obviously, the inconvenience, but like the bridge, for example, the bridge north of Bruce, since two thousand and eight, has been reduced, and they've been going around from Esteline. I mean, it isn't the volume, I don't think, that you're getting through White. But, I mean, if this was the only bridge that has ever been restricted by weight and caused an in, uh, an inconvenience for a business and an added cost, two, two extra miles loaded, empty, they can go back the same way, you know, over that bridge. You're, you're looking at, these people are, are, um, you know, we can explain to them, it, it won't, uh, be a good conversation, probably, but it's something that I think could be done, but-
I guess, I, I just don't wanna send them a letter and say, uh, here's the deal, folks, uh, because of the, the way the grant worked, uh, we're not going to have this done till twenty-seven, end of two thousand seventeen. I guess, I'd leave it in their court to say to come, if they wanna come and hear the ex, complete explanation, they can. Maybe they don't want to, obviously, if they come, they're gonna be lobbying for us to change our mind and spend the money. Uh, and I guess, whether the commission, I just, they put so much work into it, and we had those meetings, it just, I, I guess I just don't wanna leave it with a letter or even a phone call saying, well, it didn't happen until then, but-
No. One of the things you talked about was, we were talking about submitting the plans now, 'cause Banner has the plans ready to go. Um, and DOT guy said that would be not good, we're not gonna look at them. Or, I mean, if we turn around and try to do everything we can to try to accelerate this, if we can get this, um, the plans to them tomorrow, and say, here they are, we need to push this as much as we can, and it's, we're at their beck and call, um, we can't do anything different. But if they were willing to review those plans, a little bit there, be ready to go sooner, uh, if we find out we get it April fifteenth, um, we're still bidletting it in the fall. And, and so, my other question is, is you've talked about a few contractors that might be happy to do this, is there any way to touch base with them and see if they're full? That, would you even touch this type of a contract? If we were to bidlet this in September, is there any chance? Or are you booked all the way through, and would you even bid this for, to, to end this year? Um, you know, I don't know if you can, you know, you, you mentioned a couple different companies, the ones that's over there and the ones doing the culverts, and say, any chance you'd be willing to try to, to do this in the fall of next year, um, and then still work our way through there? I think we gotta push the subject. I think, I think we do. I mean, we have to, we owe to them that at least, to try to go above and beyond, and even though they're saying, no, that may not work, I think we get it to them and see if they can, and understand the situation that we're in.
Right. And, I think it's a, a very good question. I, I, I have no problem calling both Prong and Holloway and see what their schedules or what their potential will be. The only thing I can't promise is the state, you either have to have it A or B, you can't, you, if you don't wanna go with a grant, they'll be glad to start on it as soon as we send it to them. Say, go ahead. If you want the grant, again, they'll, you know, wait for that deadline. The way they read with the, the way they'll give the results is, every rejection will be notified by April fifteenth, is the way they just generically stated that. They didn't say when, so, I'm assuming that by April fifteenth, we'll know yea or nay. The other thing about telling, you know, uh, if we wouldn't have been proactive and got the work going on this bridge, I mean, if we just sent it in with the other ninety-nine that said, we're hoping to get this, we really, by their criteria, wouldn't stand a very good chance of getting it awarded, because their only inconvenience, two miles, when you put down your, uh, detour, your traffic counts aren't anywhere near what they'd be in Sioux Falls, or Minnehaha County, or Rapid City, or any of them. We were not offering any more than the twenty percent match. You know, there's a lot of things that, that we did do that tried to speed this along, and if, if we, I think we played our cards right, and I think we're gonna reap the rewards of playing it right, especially with this being the first year, they're gonna be unbelievably, uh, scrutinizing what went on and changing things that aren't working. And we've been in touch with them to tell them certain things that have not, uh, you know, been a good way to do it. So, i- in a nutshell, I, I just think we're, we're very positive in what we've done, and when we get this and we go through with it as quickly as possible, uh, it's just a matter of letting them know that we did the best we could.
It, it has been decided, it will be a bridge, or could it be a box?
It'll be a bridge. Yeah, the box was more than a hundred thousand to begin with, and I thought we made that decision to go to the, with the bridge.
Yeah, 'cause sometimes, they're saying there's more contractors that'll do a box than there is bridge builders-
Yes, you're absolutely right.
-availability.
Yeah. And another thing that, like, when I was looking back, putting together this, this scenario and the timeline, when we first presented that to Banner as which would be possible for each, uh, not only was the cost higher for the box, but your hydrology and the way they skewed it and everything was different. It, I wish I was a more educated in engineering, and I could explain to you clearer why this happens, but the way they designed the structure and whatever has a bearing on what is gonna take place, so they're very careful about that.
But you were not told that we can't send the plans in? We can have Banner send the plans in, if somebody looks at them?
Yeah.
So, let's get that done.
Yeah, that's why, like I said, for Doug, that was his recommendation to me, he said, get, get him to send the dumb things in, and if he can get them, again, he, publicly, he ain't gonna say, oh, Dick, just send them in, I'll take care of it, don't you worry. That's, you get what I mean? I, I'm real gun-shy about talking boldly about something that-
I understand. Yeah, I understand. So, but we just gotta continue to push the subject if we can. So, we need to get a consensus here, um, and tie this up here, we need a consensus on what we want direct dick, what to do.
To send the plans in?
Well, send the plans, I think we wanna do, but the question is, do we wait for the, the, find out if we got the grant, or we move forward without the grant? Um, that's kinda the consensus we need to come up with, so.
Well, I think we should send the plans, but I wanna wait to see if we got the grant. grant.
You want to wait for the grant?
Wait, see if we got it, and then what?
Because that, I mean, we'll send the plans in, we'll keep pushing, but I mean, they may not look at them, and that means basically we're waiting until April fifteenth to hear, which is going to put us bid letting in the fall, which we're rolling the dice if somebody will do it in the fall, rather than us trying to push it, do the environmental right now off the plans, get the approval of the plans and trying to bidlet in June, still not knowing if we're going to get a fall completion date there. So, I mean, that's kind of, I think, is that what you're waiting for, to say either pull this project from the state and we go on our own, or keep it in and we wait to hear?
Correct.
Still push forward, so.
Well, it's the four hundred and thirty-five thousand to maybe six hundred thousand dollar question, and I guess I'd lean towards being conservative with the money, which would be waiting for the grant.
Because I don't think the timeframe's going to change with what we got in front of us.
I agree.
Waiting for, so wait for the grant? Everybody, all right, we'll wait for the grant, so.
And then I'll contact them if, if they can speed anything up.
Well, get the plans to them, and you can, again, explain our situation, if there's somebody that would help, go to help explain that, and then, you know, I guess talk to those contractors, see if there is a chance that, you know, this would be coming out, would you have room for this? And if, if it turns out that the two that I'm talking about that already are doing jobs and they're saying, no, I just don't, then we kind of know, then we'll know a little more about it, so. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we will, we'll move on to regular business, I think, oh, yeah. Okay, number eight, regular business, letter A, action to approve a utility certificate for project number B R F six two nine five ten P C N zero one W nine.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. This is utility certificate for that bridge in Bruce you mentioned, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter B, action to approve agreement sixteen dash five zero five, an application made by Interstate Telecommunications Cooperative for occupancy of a right-of-way of county highway, highways. Look for a motion.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, letter C, action to approve agreement sixteen dash zero six, an application made by Sioux Valley Energy for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter D, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for weed enforcement officer in the weed department. Look for a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, discussion.
I did have a question on, this is part-time, correct? Is it seasonal?
Mr., you want to come on up, please?
Yes, that is correct, it's seasonal, part-time.
I'm thinking maybe we need to say in our job description that, what did Michelle call it, part-time permanent, or permanent part-time? Permanent part-time. Regular part-time. Okay. So, by saying regular part-time, that says that that person does not have to apply again, but is a seasonal worker? Okay.
And then if during the winter, they have to take some certification or something, they do get paid to opt for their.
Yes, they will be invited along.
Okay.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, letter E, action to approve request to fill vacancy for an ATV driver in the weed department.
Move to approve.
Second? Second? Okay, discussion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. All right, letter F, discussion and possible action on increasing the deputy director of equalization pay grade from a wage grade eight to wage grade nine. Look for a motion.
I'll make the motion for discussion purposes.
Say, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All right, discussion. Chris, you.
Yeah, I'll just kind of dive into it. The position prior to me ever becoming the deputy was always a wage grade nine. That was with Cindy Alt from her conception going forward as deputy. At a, at a wage grade nine, now she was deputy with the ProVal, which is our computer system to value all of our properties. And I supplied the board with two thousand and five pay scale, two thousand and six pay scale, she was still deputy at a grade nine with ProVal. Two thousand and seven, when the wage scale and the range came out, she had vacated the position, so I was not put into that position on that one, so for, for two thousand and seven, it was vacant. For two thousand and eight, when I became deputy, Joyce looked at the duties of the deputy in ProVal and made a reduction in the deputy to a, to a grade eight, but bumped Matt Archer from an appraiser at a grade six to a grade seven. So I was deputy, he did the ProVal, and that worked fine. Two thousand and nine, that was the same, deputy was eight, ProVal was nine, or, ProVal was seven. In two thousand and nine, Matt left, he took the position as deputy down in Yankton County. We didn't hire anybody back into there. I assumed as the deputy, all of the ProVal duties back. The position was never corrected, put back to a grade nine. I've been at a grade eight this entire time, basically doing double duty from what it was originally set up as. So what I'm looking at, when Laura sent down the job description for me to review, I, because I asked to add a couple of things for the request to fill to update our job duties and descriptions, and I made it specific in there that they need a working knowledge of ProVal, data structure, reporting, SQL, Crystal Reports, those core things that are required. And that job description came down to me at the, at the grade nine, and I guess I didn't even question it. So then I, you know, passed it back to her, it got put on your agenda to fill, it was approved at a grade nine, and then she went to advertise, and one of my people in my office noticed it on the county website right away and said, I thought this was at a nine, and I looked and I said it was an eight, so I brought it to her attention right away. So with that, that's kind of where I'm looking. Now, a couple of things here that I saw that I didn't get prior, and if I wouldn't have looked through the agenda, is Stacy's response to the board on her ideas and thoughts, and I'm completely on board with all of that. I should reiterate on that, after Matt had left, Joyce did bring it, she, as she is unaware of, Joyce did bring it to Stephanie Vogel at the time to get the position put back to a grade nine. I don't think it ever made it to the commission, as she was H R and commission assistants, it was just dead in the water right there. She said she did a wage study at that time and said she found out that Cindy, as a deputy, had a grade nine, was very well compensated. And I'm sure she was at the time, but at that time, there was not a county to compare to. No other counties had ProVal, no other counties had a deputy that was doing the same duties. So there isn't an apples-to-apples comparison. And then Stacy's comments down here that it's, it seems like it's kind of dependent on having a senior level appraiser right now, which is what we have, at a grade seven, which would then make the deputy grade eight. I'm totally in compliance with that. That would be absolutely fine. I'm going to touch base on the grade seven for Jacob and, and the grade six for my appraisers, though. We ran into a situation where I've got two appraisers that were hired at the same time, getting the same wage. I've got one appraiser, that Joyce in her foresight has had me doing ProVal, and I've been training Jacob as a backup for ProVal for these types of changes, hopefully the iteration and the movement forward, so, so we don't have any missed, missed beats. Him being my backup as ProVal, and also his workload and what he's taken on and what he does, his accuracy, his amount of work, I've got two appraisers that are being paid the same and one doing twice as much more. It doesn't mean that the other appraiser is doing less than his job requirements, but we had no way to recognize that. And so, that's where this grade, the senior appraiser position came in. Joyce worked with the commission to get kind of a new position created to recognize that, him being the ProVal backup. So I'm on board. If we, I guess if I was to hire somebody off of the street, they would come in at that appraiser grade six, then I would be looking at moving my deputy, if it's hired within-house, to the grade nine. If I hire from within-house right away to the grade nine, then I will not, I won't be filling that, that grade six, or that grade seven position. So again, I'm kind of in Dick's predicament that depends on what happens. If I hire from within, I don't need the seven. If I hire from without, I'm going to need the eight and probably, and then retain the seven. Also on here, Laura included the comparable counties. I called all of these counties and talked to them and asked them on what their pay is. Beadle County currently, for whatever reason, in sixteen, since this is a fifteen survey, they did away with their deputy. I don't know, don't know why. As far as a CAMA system, they don't utilize one, I think they're still using the Marshall and Swift estimator system. It's a very old, very generic program. They don't have near the capabilities to do analysis and things that we do. Their parcel count is roughly about the same as ours, about sixteen thousand. Brown County, they had the annualized salary for the deputy at forty-six-two fifty-nine. That's still accurate, and he does have sixteen years of service. She's basically got two people, she's got a senior appraiser and a deputy, and they're equal. They have no, no CAMA admin privileges at all, they just do the entry. They have a complete department that does that workload for them. Now, they're at twenty-six thousand parcels. Cottington County, it was listed at seven years of service, well, that was total years, it's actually four years of service as the deputy, and actually for two thousand and sixteen, this deputy was not apparently fulfilling their duties and has been removed from that position, and they're going to be looking to add a new one. Their wage range goes from thirty-six thousand seven seventy-four to forty-eight thousand six hundred and thirty, no ProVal. They simply do entry. They have another person that manages that program for them, and she gets compensated. Michelle Peterson is her name, she gets compensated more for doing that management as an appraiser. Lincoln County, forty-nine eight fifty-seven sixty was the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen is fifty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-five. Basically, it's one year of service as the deputy under the new director. There is no CAMA privileges yet, they've got a new CAMA system coming in, Vanguard Appraisals, they're, they're working on building that in. There isn't one person that has administrative privileges to that. And they're at about twenty-six thousand parcels. Mead County, fifty-nine three hundred was the fifteen, it's actually sixty-four one oh six now, or two thousand and sixteen, they have a Marshall and Swift estimator, no ProVal, they have another person in their office that, that does all of their Marshall and Swift changes, and she is compensated more for that. They're about nineteen thousand parcels. Minnehaha, sixty-nine thousand, fourteen dollars was the fifteen, two thousand and sixteen salary for their deputy is seventy-four thousand three hundred with four years experience, doesn't do ProVal, supervises the person that does ProVal. And I'm going to add a note on here, they have Angie, and I forget her last name down there, all she does is ProVal. She does all of their changes, all of their marketing changes, she's compensated for two thousand and sixteen at fifty-two thousand six hundred dollars to administer ProVal. And then Yankton County. Yankton County is basically the only county that has the same setup as we do, and that's because Matt went down there, got Yankton County, advanced to ProVal and got the CAMA system, and got them instituted. He is the deputy, he is, he is the ProVal admin. His salary for two thousand and fifteen was forty-three seven seventy-four, for two thousand and sixteen, it's at thirty, or forty-six thousand four hundred, and that is a thirty-five hour work week. If I run him to two thousand and eighty hours as we are, he would be compensated at about fifty-three thousand, and I think our, starting at forty-seven to his fifty-three is reflective in his five years of service down there as deputy with ProVal. So I'm at the board's mercy.
All right, discussion, comments.
Oh, the other thing, I guess, just to comment on Stacy's, you know, when I threw that together, I looked at our, our county deputy, county planning and zoning deputy, supervises one person, and I know he's got to have a lot of knowledge, he's doing a lot of things, as I stated in there, I think that's more than warranted. Our I T, Sean, phenomenal. I mean, in my mind, for what he does and to keep us rolling, even though there's no supervision, nine plus. G I S, no supervision, again, though, the mapping and the layering, and I couldn't hardly do my job without him. I, again, warranted, you know, the workload and things like that. Things I would point out that my deputy is required to do is he does have supervision over our staff, whether I'm there or not, he will assist me, the public, he's still going out in the field doing the job as an appraiser, so he's going to be doing a threefold job, appraising, ProVal, and supervision. Also, being an appraiser, that continuing education, we have to do three schools every five years, one of those has to be an I double A O school, which is basically collegiate level appraising, they're classed one hundreds, two hundreds, three hundreds, four hundreds, five hundreds, so on, just like a college course. We have to do one of those every five years, we have to do the U S P A P, which my appraiser has just completed, we have to do two of those every, every five years, we have, by law, we have to attend conferences, we have to do two workshops every five years. We, the deputy, if it was just deputy, without having to appraise is one thing, but having to be in that position and hold that appraiser's certification, there's a whole laundry list of requirements that come with it that other deputies in the county don't, don't realize, so.
All right, discussion. Stacy or Laura, any comments, or sell your report stuff?
Yeah, my comments were, you know, listed off in my report. I mean, I really can see this, especially when Chris says the different positions. Yeah, I wasn't aware that Joyce tried to bring that deputy position back to a nine. Like I said, it could have happened, I wasn't aware that.
Right, right.
That, I suppose that it probably went that direction, but, so he, you know, the, the point where he's saying whether he hires within or hires externally will make a difference on that, you know, if you look at it historically, that's, that's what it looked like happened when you had someone in that senior appraiser level, the deputy was at an eight. But like he said, if, it depends on how he hires too, so I don't know, but for our purposes, with a vacancy request, you have to list it at a certain wage grade, and I, you know, there's, there are, there's arguments to be had for doing it both ways, there really are, and I think I said that in my report, so.
So you're saying, if he advertises to a nine.
Basically, if I'm able to hire from within, which.
Okay, whoever gets the job.
And right now, realistically, in the state, for somebody to come in, turnkey, to jump on this program, we're probably looking at four people, one of them being Matt Archer down in Yankton, who has actually talked to me about potentially coming back. I don't know that it's going to happen, I don't think, but there's really about four people in the state that have the knowledge to jump on here and.
But we got to, we got to open it up, so.
Right, right.
Open it up, okay? And you're saying if we go within at a nine, then you would possibly not coming back to open up a ProVal job at a seven?
No, that, yeah, if, if it was at a nine, that would mean that I would basically be, that would be if Jacob probably.
That would be saying.
If, if he moved up, then I would, that would vacate the seven position.
But if, if we.
But if we hire off the street.
Okay, but if we did it at an eight, still hired within, you'd still not do a seven, you'd still have the ProVal done in that, in that person. The job description says.
Right now, right now, I would probably, if, if I hired somebody at an eight, I obviously can't take Jacob away from the seven to say, Jacob would probably, I'd probably have a kind of a split duty, I'd have an eight and a seven, with two of them, with Jacob being primary at the seven, until we got somebody caught up to speed as basically the backup at an eight. I, I don't know any better way to explain it. As basically the backup at an eight. I, I don't know any better way to explain it. It's a conundrum.
Well, I guess this isn't a solution or whatever, but my business experience, it's tough to, you usually have to take away the personalities of the people. And you just look at the job, how it fits in your structure and what the job is worth. And let the chips fall where they may. If your organization's been around thirty years and you've got personal relationships, well, then sometimes you change the job to fit the person, but basically you're better off having your structure, having the positions and going from there and getting people to fill it and not wherever the chips fall behind there. So my question is, the deputy director, a nine or not?
Well, if I, if I had my wish list and I could hand my, my Christmas list to you and I knew you guys were gonna, gonna come through, I would like to see my deputy at a nine and still retain that senior appraiser for, for other reasons at the seven. That would be ideal for me. The duties of the deputy. Just the supervising and, and regardless of who it is, is going to have to have some pretty good intricate knowledge of pro val. Whether it happens right away or whether it comes down the road is kind of irrelevant. They're going to have a lot of responsibility in maintaining that, that system. So ideally, the position I feel is at a nine level.
Comments? So Richard is at a nine?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Richard Haugen is the only other deputy position that is at a nine. As Chris stated, both on the IT support specialist and the GIS coordinator positions are also at nines. Yes.
All right, well, so how, Stacy, do you want to, we've already approved a nine based off of our last stuff and our last meeting.
Yes.
And so if the decision is to stay with a nine, there's no.
If the decision is to stay. We do, we have a motion on the table, but if that decision is to, to, to hire that position at a nine, you, you approve your motion, which was a, a motion to change it from a wage grade eight to a wage grade nine.
Okay.
We do nothing then with that request to fill vacancy since it was approved as such last, at the last meeting. If you decide to change it, to not change it to a nine and, and have it at an eight, probably best to rescind that motion from last, from the, from the last meeting approving the request to fill vacancy, reapprove the request at a wage grade eight.
There's mud.
Leanne, is your mic on?
I can be on, sorry about that, Tom. I said, I think it should be an eight. And I think that based on what our general overall deputy system is in the county and that that's what we're at now and, and looking at what those salaries are that, in the other counties, I, I just think it should be an eight.
You know, I, I guess, I'm leaning towards the nine and, and I just, you know, we always, I guess I compare a little bit with the backup, being able to fill in for people similar to what, you know, Bob and, and Richard have, that combination of that, that, you know, we have somebody that is being trained extra, has extra duties, has an extra system that needs to be learned, has to go through extra training, which is more than I think the other, other deputies have responsibilities of. And so looking back previously, that was part of the way the scale went and that's kind of how it was. I had a seven and eight and then it didn't get moved back up, whatever reason that is. And I'm just looking back at the history and that type of thing, that it was this and I'm not sure why it didn't and if it was asked, but I guess that's, that's in the past. So. But I do want to look back there and see that, that it was split up and there was separate people and even in the other counties have separate full-time positions for this job of entering and running that program. And so responsibilities of this deputy is, is more than I would say the, the average person in the average position. And, and I like that. I want to get, I want, be able to keep our employees. I want to compensate them. I want to compensate them for what they do. And I also want, I like that in the department of the ability that if somebody steps away, if somebody, you know, if, God forbid, Chris has an injury or something like that and is out for two months, you know, we're going to have somebody there that's going to be able to handle that, especially if it happens during this time of the year or whenever it is. And, and I, I like that ability to do that and, and I think from history and from this, I'd be for the, the grade wage nine.
When I came, I, I was all set to leave it at an eight. And I am quite certain that this was brought to the board.
In the past.
We did hear numerous times when Joyce would come in and move things. So I don't think.
I wasn't involved in any of that. So I just go on by what she told me.
Yeah, and I don't think that, that Stephanie made that decision. I, I'm pretty sure it came to the board. However, we did, you know, at, at the time of your hire, there were some, some things that we wanted that deputy to have. We wanted you to make sure that that deputy had accomplished by the end of the year. And, and so provided that happens, which I assume it will, I know it's never safe to assume, but hopefully that will happen. I, I guess I've changed my mind and I, I will agree with Commissioner Krogman that maybe we should leave it at a nine.
You know, I second it just for discussion. And I had looked at your numbers before and actually Commissioner Pierce, I, I get the exact opposite looking at the numbers that we should be at nine by looking at those numbers. So as far as the other positions, I, I'm just always, whatever the job's worth, maybe we're underpaying the others. If there is somebody that's got, doing more work than, well, then so be it. It, it, that job is that job. And that box, and you don't take this box and go over looking over there because it's two, two different jobs. And so that's why my question go back. Is it a nine or is it a nine? Is that, and I'm leaning towards, it's a nine. And whoever you hire, you know, we get the best person possible.
Well, that's, that's, I mean, you can look at grade eight and grade nine. A midline grade eight's same as a beginning grade nine. I mean, that's how the, I mean, you could start a person's experience at mid-level and be making the same as starting level at the grade nine. I mean.
I guess my, my real concern is our deputy finance officer, who is not a, I'm sorry, is not a whole lot different when we come into backup supervisory responsibilities, being able to run computer software programs, being able to do things, we have at a wage grade seven. And then to say that our deputy director of equalization should be a nine because that person will be doing all these things that really are pretty comparable. I'm thinking that if we go with a nine, we'll be back here looking at some of these other positions because that may not be fair to the employees that we have.
That scares my pocketbook too, but what's right is right. And that's, I take that one at a time, you know? We've got one before us and I just got to go with that.
All right. Well, we've had discussion and the motion on the table is to change it from an eight to a nine. Okay, and then at that time, if, if this votes down, if this votes affirmative to pass.
Then we do not have to do letter G. We have to, don't have to do anything with letter G.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any none? Please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
No.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right.
Thank you, Chris.
Yep. Okay, since letter F is there, we do not have to do a letter G. Cross that out. Move on to H. Annual review of the Brookings County Strategic Plan. As per the plan, is reviewed in February of each year. I guess, one thing I would like, you know, Stacy, I guess the question to the board of how we want, how in depth do we feel we want to get into this? What kind of review are we talking? I guess Stacy comments on that or anything?
No, the only thing I would say, I mean, because the plan states it needs to be in February, that's why it's on the agenda today. There's noth- there's no law that says you have to do it in February. That's just what you put into your plan. We can have some discussion now. If you would prefer to get into this in more depth, we can plan a work session to review this in more depth, point by point. If, if you just want a quick review, we can do that too. I guess it's, I'll leave that up to the board.
Well, strategic plan, I guess I don't have any particular problem or whatever, but as you know, I'm more about work plans and we haven't done a twenty sixteen work plan as far as I'm concerned. We've screwed around talking about all that two thirteen, what we're going to do with the rest of that and all. And we've have visited already about four, eight, somewhere, whatever. I guess I wouldn't mind getting together and reviewing the strategic plan in case there's a, a point, but it's, to me, it's just a a comp plan, a big map. But the work plan or the ordinances in the case of the comp plan are what's going to take place. And I guess I wouldn't mind getting together and prioritizing some work that we want done. And we have talked, you know, with the jail committee, we're, got a lot of it done. We don't have, well, you guys are good. Not that the other commissioner, when I first got here, we had a list that just went on, twenty-some things. And I don't think our list is that long because we've stayed with a lot of things. So, but I wouldn't mind getting together for a work plan. If we want to touch any tweaking of the strategic plan, I'd be fine with that.
I, I agree. I, I think we should take a look at that work plan because we did have a long list and we've not really looked at it for a while. And, and so I think that probably a work session to do that would be a good idea.
Everybody else okay with that? Put together work plan? Okay. Well, should we look at the, can we look at the second meeting in March? Which would be the twenty-second? We would look at maybe doing one o'clock type of meeting, work session. Does that sound okay to everybody? Stacy, is that reasonable? Okay. Let's look at that. And I'm, I ask the question is, do we want to invite our department heads to come in and go over their work plan to make sure they're there or that we're in the same, I mean, because some of the strategic plan is dependent on our department heads and their work plan and what they're planning to, I guess.
It is, but our work plan is our work plan. And I think to start with, we should just go through our work plan.
Okay.
I think we should go through ours and then if we have
Exactly.
certain things we want to work on, invite
Right.
those departments in.
All right. That sounds good. Okay, we will look at putting that in. We'll plan a couple hours. March twenty-second. Okay. Regular business is done. We'll move on to mission director report.
In your, as part of my report, there was an email that you received from Laura Marsh with the Coda role action following the public hearing on the comp plan two weeks ago, and I attached that. On the fourth legislative update from Chris at the SDACC, that was also attached to my report. They did provide an updated draft agenda for the spring workshop coming up March sixteenth and seventeenth out in Pierre. I included that, that in, it filled in a few of the gaps that were left open for some of those sessions. Do, we've discussed in the past, the eight county meeting that Brookings County is hosting. Been scheduled for March ninth, however, the, the legislators are still in session on March ninth. So we're looking at moving that to March twenty-third. The weekend right after is spring workshops. We want to avoid that week because I think most of the commissioners will be out in Pierre for that week and attending that. So it's Wednesday, March twenty-third. Does, I, I just want to verify that that works for you and then I will continue to move forward. We have the caterer already tentatively planned for that day, but I wanted to verify that, that. See, and heads shaking, yes, that that works?
And you have notified the other counties or you have not?
I, I have. But I, I, I said tentatively, we're looking at the twenty-third. I will get back to them today that yes, that is the date. So, and I've also been working with Todd Kayes with First District to get ahold of the legislators and get some other information too, so.
Thanks, thanks for catching that. That been not a good meeting, have not legislated.
Yes, I mean, every March, that is the topic of discussion at that meeting is bringing in the legislators following session and, and just.
I really can't take credit because Senator Tiedemann came to me and said, we're not out of session yet for the night.
It was Representative Deutsch contacted me because I had sent him a letter and he had emailed me right away that said, we're still in session. And he said, we could maybe try to line up something via conference call. And I said, well, let me work out things on my end. So. So yes, we can thank both Representative Deutsch and Senator Tiedemann for that, so. The only other thing I had on March twenty-first, it's a Monday, Brookings Health System is with, along with the Department of Health, is having a kickoff of their pri- pilot, pilot program dealing with breastfeeding communities. And they want, they've asked both the city and the county, they called me and asked to come and, and be a part of that kickoff event. It's from four to five. It's at the hospital at one of their conference rooms. They will be asking the county to sign a pledge and to, you know, have a policy that says we support breastfeeding women in the community and that we give our, you know, have our space for our employees and that we allow them the time and give them the space in which to pump during the day. And we do that. And so what she's saying is what we're doing already would basically cover what this pledge is, what they're looking for with the county to make this pledge. But I said that I would put it on my calendar, but I guess I didn't feel it was up to me to sign a pledge for the county. So I wanted to see if, you know, we could put it on a future agenda if you want, or if we want to get consensus that this is okay to do and someone of you attend that. I was planning on attending anyway, but just kind of looking for some direction on that, I guess.
Well, obviously I think any of us could attend with you, but that's something that we already do. And in fact, through joint powers, we're tweaking the room that we provide. And so I think that we can give you the direction to go ahead and, and write up something saying that we do support that and that we do provide a place, an adequate place for our employees. So, and if any of us want to attend, we can go with you, but I think.
And I just, I think what they're looking for is just, and to different entities to sign on and, and sign that pledge that day of. I don't necessarily think that they are going to approve our policy, you know, at that time, but they just want to get entities on board as the, you know, as they become this, with the kickoff to this pilot program.
And we do it, so.
Right, yeah, and that's what she said. We really wouldn't be signing on to do anything different than what we're already doing, so. Does anyone else want to attend that as well? It's on, it's on a Monday. Like I said, from four to five, it's up at Brookings Health System up in a, in a conference room. I don't, I think I'll be getting more information as it gets a little bit closer. It's still a month that way yet, so.
I can, I don't know. That's a little ways away for me to.
March twenty-first, from four to five. And just to. And just a reminder, it's next Thursday ahead of my upcoming dates, the Brookings County Towns and Townships meeting starts at 11 o'clock and I, I believe Chris Lillo will be out there at 11 o'clock giving his, his presentation out at the Swift Health Center. And the, this board has been invited to attend that meeting, so. That's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Going back to the meeting out at the hospital?
Yes.
Do they want the pledge signed there?
Yes.
Is that something we need to take, get a consensus on? Would I, if I'm going to be there, am I authorized to sign the pledge?
Are you okay with that? All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Don't, don't pledge any roads or bridges, okay? Deputy State's Attorney report.
I guess I kind of spoke to what I was going to talk about with Clyde when he was here, so unless there's any other questions, I don't have anything to-
Mental health commitments was also part of it.
Yes, yes.
How are we, I mean, elaborate a little bit on that?
The mental health commitments, we had 40, I believe. Have it right here.
Forty-eight, forty-six.
Forty-eight, thirty-one.
Nope, forty.
We had 48 filed, 40 were approved and committed, and that was double-checked through the finance of what we paid for. I will say that there will be more next year that have not been committed that we have filed. It has, it's on the decrease actually sending people right now.
Okay. How does that compare to 2014?
It was actually last, 2014, I believe, we had 30-some. And the number sent was, I have it right here. I guess I didn't print it. It was in the 30s, so.
So we're up?
Yes.
Probably a trend that would continue or?
Yes.
Any kind?
Yeah, there's a lot of people who, it's, it can, it may be drug-related, but it's being a threat to themselves or others, which is the criteria. We're getting more and more calls, less and less people sent.
So Terry, those numbers are up substantially over what they were maybe three years ago.
Yes.
And one of the questions that I have, two things are different, but first, first question I've got is, do you have a feel for, and I don't think we track this, how many of those are repeat people, the same person that's being sent multiple times?
There are quite a few people that are sent multiple times a year.
Okay.
So we don't necessarily have tracking that, but when I went through the files myself, I noticed that there were probably three or four people that were sent more than once.
And I think that might be increasing our, our, our numbers. And then the other change that we've had that I think is impacting on our increase in numbers is our change in our deputy state's attorney, okay, that handles them. That's not a criticism, it's an observation, having been the, the mental health chairperson for those 22 years. Mark Cradaville really kept an eye on those mental health commitments and, and was a little particular on which ones he was recommending. And I'm thinking that we, for liability purposes, maybe are sending more people that are going down on Friday and coming home on Monday. I don't know that. I don't know if you guys have a handle on any of that, and maybe I'm just off-base, but that's what, that's what it looks like from-
Well, and our office does not recommend. We simply do the paperwork.
No, no. What Mark would do is talk to the families and, and it, it comes at that level where you're talking to the families and recommending to them whether or not they should be filling out the paperwork. And I think, I think that, that again, one of the things that East Central is saying, if I understand correctly, is that we're sending too many people, that there are people that maybe don't need to be going that we're sending. I just wonder if we should, if, if that task force, if you guys are still working with East Central and the task force, if that might be one of the things that could be discussed if that's coming up. Because I think their recommendation is that we don't send so many people, so.
Well, they're doing their part, so, of not sending people, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Commission reports.
Well, as you all know, on February 9th, we had our public hearing on the comprehensive plan and our comprehensive plan is now being noticed. We're waiting for our time period to run and we might have that done. I expect that we have that done. On February 18th, Stephanie and I were at the Joint Powers Meeting. That was my first Joint Powers Meeting. It was very interesting. We talked a lot about the lactation room. Jeff Walden did introduce us to the new assistant city manager, and Jeff will no longer be on the Joint Powers Committee. That person is going to be taking Jeff's spot on that committee. And we talked about other things, but I'm guessing that Stephanie might report on some of those. On the 18th of February, went to the Chamber Mixer at Bank Stern. That's going to be a nice facility for, for Brookings. Tended the Legislative Coffee on February 20th. And one of the things I want to report on is House Bill 1129, and Sheriff Stanwick had referred to that briefly. That is the bill that would allow enhanced, people with enhanced pistol permits to carry pistols in the courthouses. I will say that I am opposed to that bill, and I think, I've sent out lots of emails on this. I, if anybody has some information on why our state association is not opposed to that, I think that's something we should talk about because our association should be opposed to that for two reasons. The first reason is the obvious one. Why would you want somebody in the courthouse with a pistol when they're doing their disputed custody case or protection order hearing their felony sentencing? Or the felony sentencing of the person that hurt their child or spouse or whatever? I mean, it is such, that is just such bad planning. But the other thing that really bothers me about this is we already have a statute on the books that says, the county commission, we can pass an ordinance that allows guns in our courthouse anytime we want to. So we have the authority over that. We have local control over that today. This bill takes that local control away from us and gives it to, says that we have to allow those enhanced pistol permit people. And what they're saying out in Pierre is, well, if a judge doesn't want somebody to have pistols in their courtroom, the judge can have an administrative rule or the UJS can have an administrative rule that prevents guns in courthouses. Well, a couple of different things that I think about on that. First of all, the UJS tried really hard to stay neutral on this. And the legislature is forcing them to take a political position, which I don't think is right. The UJS should be non-political. And I think we, as the county commission, should be making the decision about guns in our courthouses. And that's a local control issue. But, but the other thing that, that when we look at that, it is just not courtrooms in the courthouses. And, and we're lucky, we sit over here in our government center and we're kind of away from the clerk's office and, and some of those other offices, but most counties are not. All of the county employees are there, not just the judicial employees. And I really think our, our state association should be coming out opposed to this and that if the rest of you agree on that, maybe we should make that known that that's our, our position on that. And I did go to the home show on February 20th, and I have to commend Bob. Our booth looked great and had good information. It was, it was a fun booth to stop at and, and that was a nice job. That's my report.
I thought the Tootsie Rolls were too small though. But Richard was manning the booth on Sunday, very nice. I'm just going to make an observation, my short term on the commission, that there's 66 counties in South Dakota, and the state association is one county, one vote. And I think the big counties have different problems than the little counties and have a different attitude towards things. And I, someday I would think it'd be good, cities are divided by class. Because some laws are pertaining to big cities, they're, makes sense, and they don't make sense to a small town. And I think sometimes some of these county laws or regulations, statutes would be better suited to be numbered by class and that we just have a different set of problems, whether it be pistols or roads or whatever, or jails, than some of the other counties. And that's just my observation is that the small counties rule the roost. And just by sheer number. And I couldn't, you know, Stephanie's been going to them more than me, but just my outside observation could be gone.
And my concern on House Bill 1129 is, I don't know that most counties know that there's already a statute that gives them control. Why do they want to give up control and turn it over to the state? I, I don't understand that.
Bob, did you want to respond to the Tootsie Roll comment? You guys-
Okay.
Larry?
On the 10th, I attended the E911 meeting, met the participants there. We didn't have a quorum, so we didn't do much business, but I kind of got brought up to date what was going on. Briefly attended the chamber event. And on the 19th, had Joyce's retirement party here, it was well-attended by family and friends and former workers and coworkers and it was a good, good deal. That's all I have.
On the 16th, I attended a meeting with our GIS and equalization, with our GIS and equalization people at the utilities for the expanded coordinates. I, you know, Chris tried to get them to narrow down the amount of money that they were thinking they needed from the county. And I think by what they said, it, it isn't a very large amount of money. I, I'm thinking somewhere in the neighborhood of 5,000 or under. But I like Commissioner Wyeth, you know, I, I want to, I think our GIS and equalization people are much more equipped to deal with this in the manner it should be dealt with. And, and, you know, we were there for the money. There's, there's no doubt about that. But as a board, to bring this back to you, you know, I think with GIS and equalizations recommendation, I would recommend to us that we do get on board and participate in this. And it's going to be a minimal amount of money. February 18th, I attended Joint Powers. We have some alarm issues that they're working on. I think State's Attorney's Office has some issues. And the alarms go off when nobody's in the building on holidays. So, so they're working on getting those taken care of. And something that I think should be of interest to our county employees is that we are going to have an active shooter training. And Stacy tells us that the person who we will be hiring to do this is absolutely outstanding, and we're going to get a taste of it at our conference in March. So I'm, I'm anxious to hear from him. And I'm anxious to do this, but it may be pushed off until the fall. So that's one of the other things that we're working on. On the 19th, I attended Joyce's retirement party, and Joyce had expressed to me prior to it that she was really nervous because she was afraid people might not come. And I said, "That's silly. Of course they'll come." And it was the flowers and the gifts and she, it was a very nice party. And as Commissioner Jensen said, it was very well-attended. And very well-deserved. On the 20th, I too went to the forum, and I have it in my notes. I couldn't agree with you more, Commissioner Pierce. I have it in my notes to call our state association and find out who in the world, you know, did, did they poll any of the counties? That's what I want to know. Because we weren't polled. And, and I think we're in agreement that this should not happen in our courthouse. So I, I want to find out who made the decision for us to stay neutral. And I'm going to get to the bottom of this because it frustrates me. I too attended the home show and also thought our booth looked very, very nice, and that's all I have.
All right. Well, real quick, I guess about that, we've had two commissioners contact, we want, we need, we're going to do something, we need to do something, okay? So if, we need to get in touch with, Stacy needs to get in touch, or if somebody from our commission wants to get in touch with our association, but if we sit back and just complain about it, nothing's going to change. So we either need to get vocal-
I'm calling. I have no problem calling.
Okay. Well, I'm wondering also, do we need to send a letter or an email or some correspondence?
I did send this, the email that went out to our District 7 and District 4 legislators. I did share that with our association as well to make them aware of where we, where Brookings County stood on the subject.
I think one of the questions is how is the decision made on the stance? And I, and I know, I mean, I've dealt with the Realtors Association, we have the same type of situation. We have 1,400 Realtors that we're supposed to take one vote on, and we have Realtors in different communities and different sizes, different parts of the state that deal with different issues. And so it's hard to come in there, and what we have is a group of an executive board that, or Government Affairs Board that talks about making decisions. Everybody's, each board has representation on that. So my question would be is how is our association make that decision and who's representing us? And if we need to get in touch with that person that's representing us, so when they go and make that decision, they can vote yes or no, but that's-
They also have an executive board that makes those decisions.
Yeah. So I think we just need to either get, get something and write in to them that we discussed this, we're not for this, how was this decision made, we'd like an explanation. And also, I think your, your point is valid that we have that ability there. This is not, this is taking it away and allowing somebody else to make that decision for us. And whether we want to spread that out to all the county commissioners on our own, but I, I think we discussed that with our, we don't have time, a lot of time. So we either just go with our association first, and if they say, "Well, this is the decision we made," then we go over them. You know, that's the other thing you can do. Associations don't like that. Yeah, I know, but.
And as a group, it doesn't matter what your position is on, on Second Amendment issues and weapons and whatever, I think as a, as this type of group, we should be in favor of local control. And that's what we've got right now, and why would we want to give that up?
Yeah.
And can I say one other thing about Commissioner Miller's report? She, she forgot to tell you that she was elected vice chair of the Joint Powers Committee.
Congratulations. Well deserved. Okay. Commissioner Wyeth.
Okay. Not a lot went to the utility meeting, and three of you guys will understand when I told them when we left that if we're going to fish off your dock, we'll bring some beer. You know, so if we're going to use some of the capability that's come, we probably should pay something and whatever. And we got to consider the amount of work that Jim would have to provide or change or whatever. So the value, the value of what they're doing, so. I did run out to Community Health and visited with Karen, kind of took a tour. I guess I had a little misunderstanding on the room thing. I thought it was used for storage. What it really was used for is the pamphlets that they assemble on a regular basis. And they still have a room to do that, but they got to go get the stuff and then come in there. But it's working out and, I was actually, I have to admit, my first visit to our community health and should have been there a long time ago. So it was very interesting, very nice operation, very impressive. Growth Partnership didn't have a meeting, it was canceled because of health reasons. And I just said yesterday, I want to thank Sean back there and Mike Bartley, who through technology, when the mic's on, I am now getting what's on the mic through my hearing aids. And there was a little problem, no offense to your Coca-Cola, but I needed to get that thing on the other side because it was going in and out every time I took a drink. No problem. So we got that. It's been great since, but that, that's it.
Okay. I, February 10th, had the first meeting of our housing task force, the city-county room up here, attended that. And then I was at the PPCC and POD meeting with Bob on the 11th. I had a BDC meeting on the 17th. And mostly, most of it took, we had a presentation from the indoor rec center location, so to discuss that and what their decision was. We were going to weigh in on where we at, we're at on that as a BDC board. I wasn't able to make the LEPC meeting, I apologize for that one. Got caught up in work situation that ended up being half hour longer than I was expecting and didn't want to show up half hour late. So apologize for missing that. And, and I wasn't able to make Joyce's- And, and I wasn't able to make Joyce's Retirement Party at 2:00, but I stopped in about 9:00 and talked with her and thanked her for her service to the county and that kind of stuff too. So it's a good conversation, and I think she's going to stay active, some possibly consulting for other counties, which is a good, I think, a great potential for her to use her resource and her experience for other counties, which is great. And she's, I think she wants to keep busy a little bit too, so. But it was a good, good discussion with her and appreciated that opportunity, so. All right. I think that's it. Anything else? Yeah?
Just to go back to House Bill 1129 for a minute. If Commissioner Miller speaks with our state association and, and they say they're staying neutral, I think I heard you say maybe we should just send out a mailing to all the, all the commissions, to all the counties.
Well, I guess, how aggressive do we want to be with this? Obviously, we have an association, and if we don't agree with the association, then you end up going over the association, which sometimes doesn't sit very well with the association. But that would be the next step, if we, if we felt that strongly about it, to try to do an explanation of why we're doing this and this is our take on it.
And we need to do that really fast.
Yeah.
We don't have much time. Can we authorize Commissioner Miller, if she gets a response from the state association that they're not going to take any action, to draft a letter with Stacy to, to go out? Would that be acceptable? And then maybe pass it around for everybody to look at?
It's up to the board.
Stacy, is there capability? Can you just pull up every county's email?
The auditors group would probably be the best way to do that. I don't have, I don't have access to all, I mean, they're probably in the book. You'd have to type each individual email out if you wanted it to go to individual commissioners, but you could send it to all of the auditors in the state and ask them to share it with their, with their boards.
You know, you're going to have the trickle-down. Some aren't meeting and this and that, you know.
There's no email capability of, of doing that. We can't email through something with our state association? There's not the capability?
They do have an email list, yes.
They may not be willing to-
Send out an email and disagree with them.
So what happens if on the stuff we're getting from the state association, if you reply all, does it come up everybody?
It does not.
Okay.
No, I think they, they blind copy everybody.
That might, that might be a question, as if they could help us do a mass email. That might be a question we could ask.
All right. Well, next on the agenda is executive session. So in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-1, 1 and 4, personnel and contract negotiations. We will be in executive session. Do you have any motion for executive session?
Yeah, I still move.
They're so moved. So, yes, understandable. So all in favor of the executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carries. Yeah, and I have about 45 minutes is what I have, because I have to speak at Rotary.